Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is Tuesday, August the 2nd, 2022. The time is now 6:00 P. M. The meeting of the City Council of Trinidad will now come to order in person as well as Zoom. And we may have a few people listening in tonight. So would you please rise for the flag of allegiance? Mr. Donald, would you please lead us?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Debona?
Here.
Griege?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Council have any changes that you'd like to make? She does not entertain a motion. So moved. Second?
Second.
Call above, please.
Debona?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. I'm not sure, Les, would it be good idea at this point to let the public know when are the new city managers going to start?
Well, Mayor, that would be fine. I could do that now or I could do that during my attorney report. But if you would like me to do that now, I would be happy to.
Yeah, if I'm under policy or staff.
Sure, absolutely. And so, Mayor and council members, I will tell you, contract negotiations are progressing wonderfully. And I sent you an email today. I don't know if you had a chance to see the email, but contract negotiations are proceeding quite well. And we are anticipating that you will have a contract to have action on at the August 16th council meeting. So the next regular council meeting to take action and have you approve the contract with Mr. Rigor. And then he is anticipating that if all that happens, that his first day would be August 27th. So, gazoot us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other policy information, Ms. Garrett?
No.
Item four petitions or communications are overridden. On to item five, consent agenda approval. Item A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of July the 19th, 2022. Item B, reappointment of Jen for late to the Trinidad Housing Authority, and I see she's here. And item C, approval of special event permit, malt, vinous, and spirituous filed by the Confederación Mucha lista Mexicana and Esquina Americana at 206 North Animal Street on October the 8th, 2022. Ms. Ponce, I'm not sure if Ms. Ponce is here. Thank you for being here. Item D, approval of the bills for $1,485,939.62. Item E, approval of payroll, July the 23rd, 2022 through August the 5th, 2022, in the amount of $472,272.91. Entertained a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Call above.
Debona?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, public hearings. Item 6A, new tavern liquor license application filed by Kip Hampton LLP, doing business as Marketplace at 316 and 326 North Commercial Street. Hearing is now open. And we have some representatives. Please come forward and get sworn in.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good, how are you, sir?
Good.
Good. And Mayor, if I could, please, I would like to let you know that we have a couple of lawyers here this evening. And so...
Do you mind?
Exactly, I know, I know, that's right. So I don't believe it's going to be necessary to actually swear them in.
Okay.
That is okay. And also I'd let council, though, by the way, have emailed today. Mr. Lamb is here, is a designee of Mr. Chaminos. And so he is going to be giving information. He, of course, is an officer of the court. And so I don't believe... And we also have the petition circulator. I don't believe... I know, we can't swear her in if you would like.
That's probably so in case any questions come up.
Okay, that'd be great.
Would you please agree with me?
Thank you. And also there are Vince Linden, who is counsel for the applicant this evening. I don't need a point.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
Ready.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. So if I could, please, and I will be asking you, sir, the questions. But if you have anything you have to turn to Mr. Lamb to, that also is fine. So you were here tonight on behalf of Kip Hampton LLP, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Limited liability, limited partnership?
Yes, sir.
Doing business as the marketplace, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if I understand correctly, the address of the premises is 316 and 326 North Commercial Street?
Correct.
Okay. And what do you tell council, please, why are there two addresses for this premises?
Yeah, I can answer that.
Please.
326 of the old Marty P. building that we purchased years back and they're renovating. 316 used to be Paradox. Dave Hudson owns it, a company that Dave Hudson owns. And when he closed, he approached us to ask if we'd be interested in leasing that premises. And we signed a lease, a five-year lease with some extensions, right to extend, so that we could use it and incorporate to give us a little bit more seating area for the food court.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Lamb, to that point, would you please explain to council what this proposal involves? And I know it's a little unique. And so it may be a good time for you to explain to council what you're proposing in terms of this.
What we're proposing, and this is very common in Denver, Colorado Springs. You have a food court. So we have currently eight vendors. Two of them are in yet because we're still waiting on some materials. But we have eight vendors. And they have all asked us in the past if they would, if we would get some sort of wine, beer, and spirits license. So once we got everybody going, we decided we would make that effort. And that's why we're here today. So they serve different food items, anywhere from gourmet hot dogs to wings to sandwiches to chicken and waffles. We're going to have one that's not open yet, is sort of an Indian Mexican food fair. We'll have smoothies and things of that nature. So what we propose is we have a bar in the northeast corner where that's where you would go to receive your alcohol. So you go up, you order, and it's served there. And then you have your food. You can go sit and have a glass of wine or a beer or a mixed drink with the food that you've got from one of the vendors. So we feel it's a complement to what these vendors are doing and what they're serving. And again, they've asked for it in the past too. And we think it's very important. So then, what we will then do is we'll have people who will be bussing the tables. So when somebody gets up, we make sure the alcohol gets removed immediately. So we will have, depending on how busy it, the time of day, we'll be looking at anywhere from potentially three to six employees. If we have any special event where we think the crowds would be warm, we'll bring in people. Maybe somebody to work the doors, things of that nature. So to make sure we police the liquor area. We also have a patio out back on Mill Street. We have a revocable permit with the city. And so what we did, there's a parking lot back there. And part of that revocable permit, we agreed to extend the road around the outer edge of the patio and then come right back in on Mill Street and go by Greg O's Insurance behind it.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
And so, so when that's open, we will have that fenced and so that it'll be, there'll be a barrier there. And then we'll have people working, those doors working the tables so that we have eyes on it all the time. Again, we don't foresee selling a lot of alcohol. It's, I can tell you in my conversation with Mr. Chaminos, he's not looking for a drinking place. He just wants to help with the food vendors and give people a better dining experience. Some of the food there, I have to tell you, was very, very good. And so to have that, people who come in, they can sit. Our hours of operation, we're looking at for the market bar, the bar itself would probably be from 11:00 to 7:00 initially. Maybe go to 8:00 if there's people. Some of the vendors are open till late. And then as things change, if vendors want to stay open later, we might go to 9:00. This isn't going to be a late-night place either. So that's, that's the concept that we have. And we understand the only, the only difficult part of this is we just have to have people to police it in the beginning to do that. The manager, Leandra Cruz, is here, sitting in the back. So she's in charge of this. We already have another person currently who will be part of, she's sort of like a gate owner. Helps clean the tables, floors, everything. And then we'll incorporate some other people in there. And we will have, it's our intention to have a couple of the bartenders. And we want to go ahead and get them, go them through a certified training so everybody knows what's going on.
What tips training?
Tips training, yes.
Okay.
We want to have that. We talked about it on the way down. So that we, as our intention, to have training for everybody. Another thing, just to bring up, maybe save a little time. We're not going to have anybody serving alcohol under 21. I know it's allowed, you know, in certain circumstances, but we're not going to. We want to train them on checking IDs. Our policy for IDs is going to be everybody gets carded. We're not going to look at 50 or 55 or whatever. We're going to card everybody. So that will be, that will be the rule. And because we don't think it's going to be that busy either. So it's not like, you know, a nightclub or something where people are constantly coming in. But that is our plan. That is the plan. And as you all know, you know, Mr. Chaminos doing this to Trinidad. He's trying to bring people off the highway. He wants more people to come here. He wants it to be a destination. As you all know, we're building a 97-room hotel for that very purpose. And so this food court is another way to attract people, even if they're going to get gas. Come on in, you know, and maybe they'll stay. Maybe they'll stay the night. So that is really our ultimate goal. And I know at least a few of you I know, and you know, Mayor Rico, we had meetings about this type of things. You know, not this, the marketplace, but about our vision and what we're going to do. But I know that you both have done that too with what we're building and our construction. So that's sort of the plan. So if you have any questions, I will field any.
If I could, please, just a few more questions from the lawyer. And then if I may, I'm sure council will have a few questions. But Mayor and council members, it may help, as part of the application, there's a diagram on your drive. And the one I have in my hard copy is kind of hard to make out because it's black and white. But, and here we go. Right on cue. Why wouldn't I have to find it on my drive? Okay, now, if I could, please, just a few, you know, a few more questions. And so the 326 North Commercial Street, I want to bring that out because, well, part of the premises is leased and part of the premises is owned, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I want to just kind of clear up that on the deed, it says that the address is 320, 330, and I believe 340 North Commercial Street. And so is it correct that that address was reassigned at one point?
To 326.
Okay, good. So you have, you have possession legally of both 316 and 326 North Commercial Street, right?
Correct.
Okay. And Mr. Lamb, this is HP zoning, if you know?
I believe it is.
Okay. And so we're clear also, this is an application for a tavern liquor license, right?
Yes.
Is that so you don't actually have a, a food requirement, despite...
Well, we do have a food requirement with the tavern license.
Okay.
Like snacks. Like fair snacks, sandwiches, whatever. We will have that.
Okay. But since the liquor part is kind of separate from the food portions, you deem it more appropriate to have a tavern license?
Correct. We didn't think a restaurant license would be, because we're not going to have a full-scale kitchen for the, for the bar itself.
Understood. And sir, I want to ask you, just so everybody is clear, Kip Hampton LLP is the applicant organization, correct?
Correct.
Which is made up of 54.6% of Gerald Chaminos Living Trust?
Correct.
14.9% of the Emily R. Chaminos Living Trust?
Correct.
And 30.5% of Chaminos Partners One LLP, is that also correct?
Correct.
Okay. And of those three constituent organizations, Mr. Jay Chaminos, is he 79.87% of Kip Hampton LLP?
His beneficial interest is about, yeah, 79.8. It's mostly has, if we were to talk controlling interest, he's 100%.
Okay.
The reason is Chaminos Partners One is, is a limited partnership. Mr. Chaminos is the general partner, the only one. So he's the only one who can actually actively participate legally in the, in the operation of it. The other limited partners are three of his children and his deceased wife's trust, of which he's the primary beneficiary and the trustee.
Okay.
So he, he controls them all, but he owns roughly 80%.
Okay. And he is the only one, I mean, since anyone over a 10% ownership interest has to be vetted and submitted for a background check, there's no one else, right?
No. Beneficial ownership for the others is far below that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Chaminos Partners owns 30.5%. And if you break down the owners, they're, they're all under 10%. At some point, Mr. Lamb is going to be, so it's like 7 to 8%.
Okay. Okay, I saw that in the application materials. And I, I want to say, and I should have led with this, but you have worked through the application, Mr. Lamb?
Yes, sir.
And you, you verify it's accurate, is it? Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
I provided most of that information.
Okay, I bet you did.
That's why I'm here.
Okay. And I just want to ask you, in the portion of the premises, I mean, it's 316 North Commercial that is leased. You said that is from Mr. Dave Hudson?
Yes.
A five-year lease commencing on April 22nd of 2022?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And the other portion, the 326 North Commercial, is owned, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Mayor and council members, I do want to say to both Mr. Chaminos and also Leandra Cruz, who you are saying is going to be the manager. We're both submitted for background checks and they both, of course, passed. And then I want to ask you, sir, you had a survey, or excuse me, a petition circulated in support of your application?
We did.
Okay, and I know you have your petition circulator here. And we've sworn her in.
Would you like to hear from her?
Please, the car will go by.
Hope I won't overspeak that.
Yeah, right, right.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
For the record, my name is Eva Maloff Garrettson. Last name is G-A-R-R-E-T-S-O-N. I am one of the owners of Liquor Licensing Professionals, doing business as Liquor Pros. We are a professional survey company doing both liquor and marijuana surveys throughout the entire state of Colorado. It's been in business since 2012. I took over the business in 2017. And myself alone have conducted over 4,000 surveys. So a little bit of a full coat. And we are also listed under Liquor Enforcement Division as a responsible vendor trainer for the state of Colorado as well.
Great. Will you please tell council real quickly the results of your petition?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So Liquor Pros conducted the needs and desires survey regarding the new tavern liquor license application for the marketplace located at 316 and 326 North Commercial Street. Since we are a third-party unbiased petition company, we do not guarantee results for our clients. We simply perform the survey, the results are what they get. So we take a no just as much as we take a yes. I know, I do know in our original packet, and I would like to put this out right away. This all goes big blossom, by the way. So it really helps to have people who knows what they're doing in our jurisdictions because we run into that a little bit. But the gentleman who did sign in opposition, I personally spoke with him. I can verify that he is in fact over 21. And speaking with him. So I do want to make sure that, you know, we did let folks know, hey, this is what, what they're bringing in. So we did visit with the attorney quite a bit to find out what the concept was, who they were. And when we actually came into town, we actually took a tour of the facility so that we had a clear understanding of what they were doing, how they were doing this, so that we could relay that back to business owners, managers, and residents inside of Trinidad. So at that point, we carried with us both a business packet and a residential packet. With the business packet, we actually asked them to identify themselves as a business owner and manager. And so they do so by circling which one they are. In order to do that, we asked them to list their age. All of our surveyors have actually taken a responsible vendor trainer. So if we do feel that somebody is under age, or we go under the age of 40, or they look young, we do ask for ID. So we try and ID those folks to make sure that they are signing legally for something of this nature, just because she has enough on her plate. So we try and not put that back on her. We did this petitioning on July 27th and July 23rd, catching a Friday and Saturday in here, and made attempted contact with 214 business owners, managers, and residents inside the area. And we obtained a total, it started out with 105. After the audit, we now have 101. 38 business owners and managers all signed in favor at 100%. And 63 residents signed in favor at 100%. Like they said, this is new to this area. This is actually the 15th food hall we've done in the last two years from Denver, Commerce City, you name it, Port Collins. They're, they're popping up like crazy. People love them. But we did want to make sure that we, with regards to the tavern liquor license and the food requirements, we did let them know, because most tavern liquor licenses are viewed as bars. So we did let them know that this is not how that concept works. You want to grab something different, I want to grab something different. We basically meet at a common consumption place and have a drink if we want one. So we did explain that to them as well. But the 100%, given the fact that you have several other licenses of similar type in this area, 100% still shows a positive need for this liquor license in this area. Some, can I ask any questions?
And it was 100 in favor and one opposed?
And I do, I do think it was one opposed. So you have 99% in favor, 100% opposed. He was genuine about it, so I didn't want to leave his no out.
Okay, good. Thank you, I have no further questions. Thank you, I appreciate that. So, gentlemen, just a few more questions if I could, please. And Mr. Lamb, you are obviously, as a practicing attorney in the state of Colorado, you're familiar with the Colorado liquor laws and the Trinidad liquor laws, is that fair to say? And I believe Kip Hampton LLP has a number of other liquor licenses, is that correct?
Kip Hampton has the Club 14. And I believe, I think it's on the Mount Carmel. I think Mr. Chaminos is on the Mount Carmel. It's a beer and wine license that they don't really have the restaurant anymore, but they still have events there. So they still use it for when they came here, those events, and that's what I'm calling saying.
We see it frequently.
Yes.
So Mr. Chaminos, as a potential license holder, he's aware of Colorado and Trinidad liquor laws, correct?
Yes, yes.
And sir, you understand that we require, of course, as a local licensing authority, lawful compliance at all times? And, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And you understand, sir, that liquor violations, if there are any, even if we don't find out about them, you have a duty to report them to the city?
I swear.
Okay, thank you. And that for violations of sustained, you or Mr. Chaminos could lose the liquor license?
I understand.
Okay, thank you, sir. And you understand also that if you were granted this license of Mr. Chaminos, Kip Hampton LLP, that you have an ongoing obligation to cooperate and comply with all city officials regarding the liquor license?
I know.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Mayor and council members, stand by me for the questions.
Okay, questions from council?
I have a procedural, just a question that I don't, I've never seen this happen before. But 316 is separate from 326. So are you going to allow liquor in 316?
Yes.
And how are you going to get it?
There's a doorway between the two that has been approved by the city. So there's a doorway. So as you walk in the front door of the commercial, if you go right, so moving south, there's a doorway.
By all means.
It's not open yet. The door has been cut. We're not done with the construction.
Okay, I couldn't get that in my head.
So we will just have, the 316 is really, it's not going to have any vendors in it. It's just for sitting. And at some point...
But people can bring alcohol and...
Yes, they can go in there. And so those are extra, that's an extra area.
That's a great question that I had, and you answered from it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. We've gotten to me. I had some concerns about the control and policing that could be done in this kind of thing. But your testimony helped me to understand what you were going to, going to do about that. And I felt comfortable with that. On the patio, I was a little bit unclear. Are you saying that that always will be open for liquor service, the patio, or...
Probably just in more months. We won't have it outside. You actually have to go inside to get, to buy. And then you can go out there and say, we'll have barriers up to close it off.
Okay. But normally it won't be a place for...
No, I mean, right now, if you go there, it's still Mill Street.
Okay.
But we have that revocable permit, so we can close it legally.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Is there any concern about a school being above...
No, it's, Gold Academy is not an active participation school. It's an online school. They've been our tenant for about three and a half, four years. And just occasionally, they have people in and out of there. It's, it's our intention that when they're not there, we're going to, we'll have some sort of rope on the stairs there to close it off. And when they are there, they're usually there more in the mornings. So they're really, we don't think there's going to be any problem with the students at all.
And this is the diagram for the, for the new improvement right here, this new apartment?
Yes, that's the diagram. The blue is the area which is where liquor will be allowed.
Okay.
And then on the second to the right is a little blue area. That's a storage downstairs where we have a very large cooler. And that way we can store kegs. And it's our plan to run the hose up through the floor directly above. So it's an adjacent room to have some kegs there and then in this cooler. And so it's, there's room for storage to, so that's the point of that. So...
Any more questions?
Thank you. Up, for, as a matter of public record, can you explain a little more? This blue hash line shows the outdoor areas included?
Yeah, so the lighter blue is the outdoor area. So behind, at the bottom of the, of the floor plan, that's the, the old Paradox. That's 316 North Commercial. It has a covered patio already. Then in order to go to the larger area of Mill Street, we have a little walkway, that thin area that connects it. That's all that's for. There won't be tables or anything. It's just the, to possess the alcohol, to move it, you need to have it part of this.
And how, how will that be policed again?
We'll have, we'll have attendance, people, employees who will be there. We'll have a fence... We'll have, we'll have attendance, people, employees who will be there, we'll have a fence around it. There will be some sort of a fence. We're not going to, like at Club Fourteen, at the outdoor area, they have sort of a chain. In this case, because of the nature of it, with it being a street, we want to have a little bit more of a barrier to close it, and so that any car turning down Mill Street realizes they can't drive through there.
So when that's, when that's in use, a temporary barrier of some type?
Yes, there'll be temporary fencing, no barrier, yeah. They're probably, you know...
And otherwise, when this, the street area is not used, there'll be a fence that precludes people from stepping into the street area?
Yes. Well, but we probably, if it's in the wintertime, we probably won't have the paddocks open.
Okay.
We'll close them off depending on...
I have no further question.
Mayor, could I please interject a little thing? I'm sorry, don't interrupt you, sir. I just want to say, and I'm sorry, I probably should have brought this up in the beginning, but I do respectfully want to say that I believe Councilman Thurlow should recuse himself, and I'm sorry, just because you are a tenant, I believe, in this area, so I'm sorry, sorry. Okay, and anyway, so I just wanted to bring that up, and I apologize, I, so anyway, that's all I have, thank you, sir, for interrupting.
The only question I have is, what are going to be the operations daily, are we closing in particular days of the week?
Yeah, seven days a week is the intention.
Okay.
If, as long as our vendors are open, then we intend to be open. We just won't be open early in the morning or anything like that, because we have some vendors who open early for breakfast foods, pastries, things of that nature. So as I say, it'll be like eleven to seven initially is what we plan as an operational time. We may go eight, depending on the need, and then we'll, you know, as long as we have it scheduled.
So that's the big, that's the big problem that we have in town now, that so many of the restaurants are closed, all at the same time, it seems like we have our time, I mean, it's good to know that they're going to be open daily.
They will be open daily, and if there is a demand, we'll change the app, we'll increase the hours to nine o'clock, something like that, so it is open later. It's sort of touching though.
Okay. Any other questions?
Close.
Anyone in the audience or online want to speak for or against the application?
Mayor Rico?
Yes.
Reese Lopez, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, and one question I have for City Council, as a liquor licensee in the city of Trinidad. Traditionally, the licensing board, the City Council, has to deal with individuals for liquor licenses. On a corporate level, I'm not too familiar with how the procedure works. However, the question I have, and if I'm recently correct, since this is a corporate licensed application through the LLP of Kip Hampton or L L L P, should or is it required, and this might be a Councilman Downs' question, should the board members of the LLP be properly vetted to see if they do not disqualify themselves as board members or investors to this organization? Thank you.
Mayor, so I don't believe there are board members in a limited liability limited partnership. And we get corporate or LLC or limited, not L L L Ps all the time, but businesses that are owners and holders of liquor licenses all the time. And in this situation, we have vetted the one owner that we need to vet. So thank you, we have done that, and that is...
Well, if I can reiterate to Mr. Lopez, with a limited liability limited partnership, only the general partner can actively be involved in the day-to-day business. The limited partners cannot, and if they become active, they lose their limited liability status. So they become like a general partner, like in a partnership, all partners are liable. Limited partners are like, they're investors in a sense, they cannot participate. So that's why Mr. Chumino is a hundred percent control of the interest, and he has been vetted.
Thank you.
But to Mr. Lopez's question, too, we have submitted a partnership agreement for Kip Hampton, which indicates the percentages that we've worked through, and which we clearly did. And so despite the fact that Mr. Chumino is the general partner and can be the only person to make decisions or control for how to say in the company's direction, we have disclosed the minority, the limited partners, and as you know, they have less than a ten percent interest, and by law, don't have to be vetted. But clearly, the city is aware of all interested persons in this application.
That's correct, thank you. And sir, I believe you had a, you wanted to add something, I think, regarding the basement?
I did want to speak before we close.
Certainly, you do, sir, go ahead and...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, thank you for being here tonight, thank you for your attentiveness. My name, for the record, is Vince Linden, I'm the attorney for the applicant. For the record, Mr. Tim Lamb, the lone general counsel and personal attorney for Mr. Chumino, present with me. He's been conducting the hearing with your counsel, Mr. Downs. The diagram that you have before you is an amended diagram. I have a copy that's marked amended eight to two thousand twenty-two that I'll hand to Ms. Garrett. And I talked to her this morning, and also with Mr. Downs, that the packet that we submitted included a diagram that only included the first floor. So on the diagram in front of you on the left-hand side, that's what's, that's what's in the city's application materials, is a diagram or floor plan of the first floor only. And speaking with Mr. Lamb yesterday, we determined and thought that it would be prudent to ask your permission to also license the downstairs storage area, and so you see that on the right side of your diagram, so that they can put keg coolers or store other alcohol downstairs. That would not be open to the public, there'd be no consumption taking place in the downstairs portion of the building. But we are asking your permission at this late hour to amend the diagram so that, so that Ms. Garrett can send this diagram to the state, and that we can have the downstairs storage area licensed as well.
Any issues with that?
No, no, that I see, mayor. Any questions from counsel on amended diagram?
I just have a question, is, the findings that we have are fine, though, they include that part that if we pass it, that will be reading?
I believe the, and I'm sorry, I don't, I think we should add that it would include the basement area.
For the record, I handed Ms. Garrett, would like to be the final diagram, slightly different than what you have, it just has my handwriting on it, where there would be liquor storage, outdoor patio area, and restrooms.
Well, if, I'm sorry, don't interrupt.
Which, which building is the basement area in, three sixteen or...
Three twenty-six.
Okay.
There is a, yeah. Yeah. It's under three twenty-six.
Ms. Garrett was saying, and this makes sense, we really don't describe the physical premises in the findings. And so I think, you know, the findings are sufficient for, and also, we will attach a copy of the diagram, so we have that, and it will be clear.
This is all part of the same, I have to get the same...
Yes, this is checking.
Okay, thank you.
Any else? Any other questions from anyone listening? None, hearing is now closed. Item six eighty-one, tavern liquor license application filed by Kip Hampton L L L P, doing business as the marketplace at three sixteen and three twenty-six North Commercial Street. Entertained a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hall vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Grealish?
Yes.
Olutree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Say.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Hall vote? That was it.
Yeah.
Mr. Downs, I have one other question, where it has, who testified in favor of the granting license. Is it appropriate for me to say Tim Lamb, applicant's general counsel, testified in?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and then Eva Malouf, I want to make sure of saying Malouf.
Garrettson? Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, it's M A L O U F, but I use Garrettson, G A R R E T S N.
Okay, so should I just say Eva Garrettson? Okay, great, all right.
Ms. Olutree?
Ma'am, sorry to interrupt.
No worries.
Mr. Downs, I'd like the record to reflect, too, that Mr. Lamb, while personal counsel for Mr. Chumino, has his proxy appear tonight in his stead, so he's not really appearing as his attorney, he's appearing as Mr. Chumino.
Good distinction.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so can I say Tim Lamb, applicant's proxy?
Certainly.
Okay.
I don't want a general counsel either.
All right, I'll try you. Okay, this matter came on for hearing on the application of Kip Hampton L L L P D B A, the marketplace at three sixteen and three twenty-six North Commercial in Trinidad, Colorado, for a new tavern license, liquor license, before the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on August second, two thousand twenty-two, in City Council chambers and City Hall. The City Council, having reviewed the application, supporting documents, and reports of the city clerk and other city staff, petitions admitted into evidence after hearing, and testimony taken during the hearing, makes the following findings. One, the neighborhood consists of that area located within the city's corporate limits. Two, Tim Lamb, the proxy for the applicant, general counsel, as well as Eva Garrettson testified in favor of granting the license. No other persons testified in favor of or in opposition to the granting of the license. Three, the city clerk's reports show that there are forty-three liquor license outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are six fermented malt beverage off-premises licenses, one fermented malt beverage on-premises license, two club licenses, thirteen liquor and restaurant licenses, six liquor store licenses, nine tavern licenses, one arts license, two beer and wine licenses, and three lodging and entertainment licenses. Four, the applicant submitted petitions regarding the liquor license application. Petitions contained one hundred and one total valid signatures, of which one hundred and one were residents or business representatives from within the neighborhood. Twenty-one years of age or older in favor of issuance of a liquor license at this location. No remonstrances were submitted. Five, the applicant, through testimony and other evidence, made a prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor outlets, and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Six, based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the City Council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor establishments, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant officers are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of Kip Hampton L L L P D B A, the marketplace at three sixteen and three twenty-six North Commercial Street in Trinidad, Colorado.
And good luck to you, you, thank Mr. Chumino for this new investment in the revenue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And that's ours from what you acquired from there.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, forward these things, I just want to commend your clerk, Audrey Garrett. I practice administrative law all over the state, and I can tell you, it's very difficult sometimes, I feel personally, to deal with government, local government can be difficult as an attorney. And I just want to say, she's at the very top of the list. It's a lot more difficult, this presentation, seemingly simple tonight, is a lot more difficult behind the scenes. And she makes it very easy for you, she makes it easy for me in some regards, but I will say that she thoroughly vets the application. This was a new type of application for Trinidad, she had a lot of questions. She's as smart as any attorney that I've met, and I just want to commend her because she does a lot, she does a lot behind the scenes that I don't know if you're aware of. And she treats you as a human being, which is very nice. Mr. Downs as well, sometimes very difficult to get in touch with an attorney for local government. Mr. Downs took my phone call in the first ring today, took his time with me, went through the application materials very well and thoroughly, treated me as a professional, I want to commend him as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for acknowledging that, thank you very much.
You're not boring anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
Item seven unfinished business. Seven A, set public hearing in second reading of ordinance, amending parking regulations as it pertains to commercial vehicles at six C M on August the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Entertained a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Garrett?
Mayor and members of the City Council, as you know, the city attorney Downs reached out to someone at the school district and talked to them about their property that abuts their current location where they store their buses. It sounds as though they will be willing to rezone the property. However, in order to address the issue at hand, I ask council to consider the ordinance as written to identify a commercial vehicle to include privately-owned school buses at this time. The school district doesn't make the practice of parking school buses in residential areas, with the exception of where they park all of their buses. It's not posing a hazard at this time, and we'll still pursue the rezoning of that property so that they can be fully compliant down the road. But we would like to just advance the ordinance so that we can address the other issues where there are site issues and what have you in the neighborhoods.
Okay, questions from council?
No questions.
No.
I have no questions.
Okay. Like I said, you know, thanks for getting that all cleared up, and that was a big question, it did arise, so. Good to know that they want to rezone at some point in time, and hopefully it's not, they don't drag it on too long, but make that, so let me, one question here would be, if, did they say anything about when they might try to go in for rezoning? Because hopefully it doesn't go on for two, three years before they try to rezone that, so.
And, I'm sorry, I think that was an issue. No, mayor, they did not. And the gentleman I spoke to at the school district is an individual by the name of Gary Weber, and I forget what his title is, but I think that in order to do this, it would probably take school board approval, right? So, and they may be waiting for us to kind of lead, you know, rather than them lead, so I don't know. But they did seem very receptive to the idea, or Mr. Weber did, so.
I guess the biggest thing is that we just stay on top of it within the next six months to see if they come forward. If not, might have to reach out to them and say, are you going to ask for rezoning anytime soon?
Absolutely.
So that we get it completely clear.
Right.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's more a point of clarification, I just wanted to make sure I followed the logic there. Ms. Garrett, you're saying if we proceed with the ordinance as written, there's no inherent contradiction because of the distinction of the public versus private buses, is that, do you understand that?
That's correct, that's, that's what I'm proposing, that we address the privately-owned school buses that are parked in neighborhood areas that are causing site distance issues, and that we work with the school district to get that property where collectively they park those buses.
Okay, I just want to make sure, passing the ordinance as is could not necessarily put the school district in violation because of that distinction?
That's correct.
Okay, that's the question.
Any other questions? Hall vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Grealish?
Yes.
Olutree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. I made Ms. Lane's business, consideration of appointment of Jerry Begley to Trinidad Urban Renewal Authority Board, entertained a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Can I come forward?
Sure.
Ms. Begley, if there's any questions for you. Discussion, Ms. Garrett, anything?
As you will see, Tera considered Mr. Begley for appointment to see if he would be a good fit for that board at the meeting on July the fourteenth, and they recommended City Council appointment to the Urban Renewal Authority. They, they've been in need of additional members for some time, and most recently, Carol Bolton resigned from the board, so they really do need members on the board.
Okay, questions from council?
No, just Jerry's a great fit. No, just Jerry's a great fit. No one knows better than he. Wonderful asset to the community the last forty years as a contractor and what he's contributed to the college in terms of education and the programs that he's initiated through the college. It's really well done.
No questions.
I'd ask you some, but I know you better. Yeah, I think you'd be a good job, do a good job, Joe.
Yeah.
But I'm glad you stepped forward to do that. We have people that don't want to do anything, but I'm really glad you did, and I think you'll be a good example to the board.
I agree with all the prior comments, although I don't know you, but I'm very excited about what you do for the college, and I like the tie-in with the Lappinge houses.
Well, thank you.
I haven't formally met you, but I think we've talked on the phone.
We have talked on the phone.
And I appreciate you being proactive with the housing situation here in Trinidad. He's, I was considering taking the class, and I had taken it with my son, so he kind of was on me about it, so it was good to talk to you, good to finally meet you face to face.
I have no questions, but I do want to say thank you for your willingness to serve. It's super helpful. Thank you.
Likewise, Jerry, because I've known you a long time.
Yeah.
And, you know, we need people on that board that have really good knowledge about building and other aspects of housing and other things, and I think you're a good fit for that, and I appreciate your application.
And I want to thank everybody as well. And, and just, I am looking forward to it, and like I said, we want to help the community as much as we can, and both me and my wife are dedicated to that. It's kind of a strange twist. It's taken, I've been here for forty-three years at Trinidad, and here I'm standing here forty-three years later, you know, looking at retirement or whatever, but I do want to get involved, and that's, we're being more proactive, and hopefully we can lead by example. Some old guys have some stuff in the tank, and they want to do it, and it's important that it's important he does to help out, you know? We see the troubles, we see the struggles, and, and so, you know, it's, it's a great honor, to be honest with you, so we're looking forward to it.
You know, I just, you know, I was on the original Torah board when it first was reinstated back in fourteen or whatever, went through some training, and there was a lot to it. My recommendation for you is to probably sit with the chairperson and get training under your belt because you're going to need it, and because it's a different, it's a different animal.
Well, I was, I was asked at that meeting, and they said, are you ready for all the stuff? And I said, I don't know. I don't know. You know, so, yeah, we're learning on the fly here, so, but we're willing to try. That's, that's, we're willing to try.
Okay. Call a vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Item eight D, first reading of an ordinance amending Article One, Chapter One, Section one dash two, definitions adding long-term rental and primary residence and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to six P M. on August the sixth, sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Need someone to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Entertained motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor and council members, and I know Mr. Yurman is on it as well. Is the council communication indicates what's done by Mr. Yurman? The definitions before you are definitions that need to be added to the municipal code in order to accomplish what we are seeking to do in the, the Housing Now Economic Development Incentives Program. So with that, with that in queue, here answer any questions you have.
Mr. Yurman, do you have a seat to add?
You're muted.
You're muted.
You're muted. You're still muted.
There you are.
No, yeah.
I guess we have some audio difficulties here.
Right.
Okay, well, I guess we'll just have to go on with that comment that he might have. Any questions from, any other questions from council?
I have a question.
Sure, go right ahead.
So how are we gonna enforce this ordinance on the long-term rental? That's gonna be a tough one.
Push it down, do you have any answer to that?
Well, I do, and boy, is that a good question for, for Mr. Yurman, but they would have to agree to, so the properties would have restrictive covenants. I'm not sure that this would be necessarily part and personal of that, but people would have to agree going in that the premises would be for purposes of a long-term rental as opposed to a short-term rental. That is, people could not avail themselves of the incentives being offered here unless they agree to make the property available on a long-term rental basis. I'm hoping I didn't get that horribly wrong. Michael, thumbs up, thumbs...
Can you guys hear me now?
There you go.
Hallelujah.
All right. Sorry, if you wouldn't mind, was there a question regarding how we're gonna enforce this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, if you look at the definition on long-term rentals, there's a really important piece in that definition. It says that it must be rented at a term, well, at least a minimum of six months, but then it is not occupied for a term of, of, or in three months, they're out of compliance. So what that basically is saying is that they actively, when they, between tenants, they actively have to be seeking to lease them. So when it comes to enforcement, if, if they're not following through with restrictive covenant, it would be, it would be basically a citation of municipal code, and that's why we're inserting this in the Chapter One of your code. And so it would be a violation of Chapter One, it'd be a municipal offense, and then the way it'll be written is that every day that they're out of compliance is a, is needed an additional citation. And I believe your municipal citation is a hundred dollars a day. Is that correct?
I think three hundred.
Three hundred?
Three hundred, yes, sir.
So that, that's, that would be a motivating factor for someone to get that rented and to ensure that it's a long-term rental. The biggest thing is that I can tell you that the actual enforcement of how does this, how does a rubber hit the road or a stamp do it? It's how it tells. I can tell you that neighbors will tell if the property is not being, is being used for a short-term rental or is being taken advantage of from what it's, it's, it's a small community there in Trinidad, and I can tell you with my experience in Prestebut and, and Slida, that your neighbor next door is probably the best source of information on if something fishy is going on and they're not, they're not respecting the jurisdiction covenant. But the power will be through municipal code, general violation, that would be in the, in the document. And the same thing with primary residence. If you look in there, there are two, they have to provide two, two proof, two, two standards of proof to show that that is their primary residence. You can see there's a list of about four or five options, but registration, vehicle registration, their tax ID, et cetera. So as long as they, you know, can provide that when questioned through the jurisdiction covenant, there'll be an authority for the city to ask for that documentation. So as long as they can provide that, then it would be their primary residence. So what we're saying is that these units have to be a long-term rental or a primary residence, on your mind.
I, I understand the definitions. My concern is the short-term rentals. This is gonna be pretty much on-your-honor kind of thing, because we're not gonna lease, there's no way we could lease these rental properties to show that they're long or short-term rental, not unless we go through Airbnb and VRBOs every month to see if these properties are listed. I mean, it's...
Was that not a company recently that said they do that as a service? I mean...
I don't, I don't know, but I mean, really...
There was some discussion we had here where...
Yeah.
A company does that as a service.
You know, go ahead, Michael, some of that.
Yeah, there are, there, I've, I've used a bunch of compliance software in the long-term rentals, and yes, there are companies, you know, it, it would be worth considering that software, especially if you're seeing an increase in short-term rentals. It's, you, you see a better compliance around sales tax and lodging taxes collection when you use those, when you use that software, but it's kind of a, it's kind of a, something that you want to do as a cost analysis of whether it makes sense. I, I will say that, you know, if someone is short-term renting these, it would become quite obvious in, in that fact that they would have listings that would be posted on the Airbnb. I, I can get into nuances of, of how we go about documentation of that, and it's not pretty, but I think in, in the short, short term, I think you're gonna see a lot of compliance, and especially the folks that we've been talking to with this program, a lot of them plan to house their own, their own staffs that work for them. So I think there's a lot of excitement around getting everyone forced housed and safe, secure housing around a lot of this.
Would it, would it prove us to when one of these does come up, that we somehow let the neighborhood know? Is that a good idea or a bad idea?
Yeah. I mean, absolutely.
You can tell.
That is, yes.
Yeah, kind of.
Well, one suggestion I had was actually that we make placards for the folks that are participating in this program, and we put it in the front windows while they're doing the renovations, so the neighborhood would know that they receive housing now funding. And so, you know, I think that's A, one really good way to politicize the good work the city is doing, as well as letting the neighborhood know that those units that were put in that neighborhood were put in with the city's settlement money. So I think that is, you know, something I was gonna kind of surprise the council at that hearing if I can give them a name time, but if not, I think we can certainly, I'm not sure that happens in the short-term.
That's a good idea.
Questions?
Mr. Yurman, are you getting any pushback on this requirement from the developers you're talking with?
You know, I, I will say this, we have made the commitment, and I was working with your council, Mr. Downs, to get this done as quickly as possible. Next week, we have made, by the end of next week, to have a kind of a mock draft that we're gonna send out to all the property owners. So the, the restrictive covenant will be an exhibit to the funding agreement and recorded at C O. And so we're endeavoring to get that out as quickly as possible. That's kind of why you're seeing this ordinance tonight, is to ensure that the proprietors are able to understand what that restrictive covenant is, because that is recorded against the property in perpetuity and restricts those units in perpetuity to long-term rentals or primary residence.
One other question for you. Is there something that's in the development agreement that you're working with them so that something, if that, that happens, it's beyond their control, like there's a fire or water pipes go out, and it takes a long time to fix that? Is there something in your agreement that doesn't make them in, in default of this or in violation of this because it's not, it's beyond their control that they can't lease that unit?
You know, that's a great comment. They consider those act of God clauses. Mr. Downs, you probably could speak to that a little bit. You normally allow a, a act of God clause in this type of agreements.
Or force majeure, right?
Or something that...
Exactly, yep, absolutely. It can be like, I'm trying to think of an example, but an act of, of human intervention in extraordinary...
You could put...
Measures, but yes, it's, it's a force majeure provision or act of God, absolutely, that they, it would be a standard contract provision, I think. That is absolutely appropriate, in case they're not able to perform through no fault of their own.
Very good, good. Habitable. And unhappable.
I'm just, I'm just wondering how that will tie in with this, because this doesn't seem to have any, you know, there's no, nothing in this ordinance that says if something happens to a unit, that it can't be, it's not repairable or something like that within three months, or so that it can be on the market. We might want to put something in there that deals with that situation so that we don't have people getting in violation through no fault of their own.
In these two definitions, I mean, I, I understand, I think that's a very good point. I don't know that it, that it needs to go in these two definitions, right? But it would be in the agreement itself. Okay?
That's why I asked that question. I wanted to know, do we have like a backup plan if something happens? Because this is just black and white, you know? It has to be on the, the market if it's not being rented and needs to be on the market.
Yes, ma'am, and, and I think a provision in the, in any kind of contract language or any kind of lease agreement language, I don't know if it would be a lease agreement, but I think it would be, that it would absolutely include that. It would include such a provision, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, the question that I have in mind is, Mr. Yurman, you're saying that this, the property would be in perpetuity for long-term rental. That's what you said, correct?
Correct.
Let's say that the owner decides he wants out, or she wants out, or they want to sell the property for, to a permanent residence. Is there, how do we handle that? Is that...
Well, they can, they can occupy it as permanent, primary residence, right? So it's either one. It's either a primary residence or a long-term rental. But if they wanted, they, for instance, if, if someone wanted to, if someone were to want to occupy as a second home or do a short-term rental, my short-term answer is, or my short immediate real answer is a no. That was not why the unit was established, that the unit would work for us.
Yeah, that, my, my question, my question is, my, my questioning is actually is to turn this into a, a saleable home for someone else down the road. If they decide they want out to be able to sell it to someone that will own it later on, I, I don't know how, how that would be handled there. Can they do it?
Yes, they can sell it to someone who will occupy it as a primary residence.
Okay.
They just can't occupy it as a second home for short-term rental after the second sale. So it's a signable, the restrictive covenant is a signable for future owners as long as they're primary residents or long-term.
Right. Okay. Okay, makes sense. Any other questions? Call a vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
You think so?
Rico?
Yes. Item eight C, first reading of an ordinance submitting to the voters of the city, a measure to reestablish the city's right to provide all services restricted since two thousand and five by the Colorado General Assembly with their passage of Senate Bill oh-five dash one fifty-two, including the authority to offer telecommunication services, high-speed internet services, advanced services, and/or cable television services to residents, businesses, schools, libraries, nonprofit entities, and other users of said services, either directly or indirectly, with public or private sector partners, and setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to six P M. on August the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Someone introduce, please?
I will introduce.
Second, I mean, motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Garrett?
Mayor and City Council, this ordinance will set forth the question that will appear on the ballot in November, and I recommend that council approve the ordinance so that we can add it to the ballot, and I can provide it to the county as required.
Okay. Questions from council?
If it passes, are we going to, I mean, this is some headline, but we're gonna, I, I recommend that we do a lot of research before we leap into doing it under utility. So that's the only thing, just to make sure it makes sense for Trinidad.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, just to let you know, one of the things that before Mr. Valentine left, we talked about, trying to get a consultant to, to give us some advice as to the direction to...
Thank you.
Okay.
No questions, they're all my questions.
I have no questions.
I have no questions. Call a vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Grigo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item eight D, first reading of an ordinance submitting to the voters of the city, a measure to allow the city to sell the Hughes lumber building at one twenty-seven... A measure to allow the city to sell the Hughes lumber building at one twenty-seven East Plum Street, setting a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to six P M. on August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Need someone to introduce?
Hello?
Okay, any motion? Someone, any second?
Second.
Ms. Garrett?
Mayor, council members, if I could intercept that, please. And so, um i- included in this is a uh, an analysis, a property analysis that you have for your review that was done by Lisa Trummer. And she did this, she compared, you know, comparable properties as realtors do. And this is the dollar figure that she came up with for the approximate market value for that building. And that was the main question I wanted to have answered before you had this before you this evening. So Ms. Garrett and I are comfortable in recommending that figure as the, is the recommended uh market value or the the price for for the property, right? And it could go higher, but I don't believe it could go lower. For the record, that is three hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Questions from council?
That the comps look good.
I know, they do, they make sense.
It had to be hard to do.
Yes.
Yep.
There's no comps.
And she was incredibly nice, very quick and efficient, and did it all for us. And this is Ms. Trummer, and did not charge us.
Wow.
I know, I know.
Right, yeah.
She was just amazing and said, no, no charge. So it was very pleasant.
If you got an idea to send her a vote from council, say, thank you.
We'll do it, we'll do it.
Enough of the questions, call vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. On to item nine, council reports, Mr. Trump, anything?
The Los Angeles County Veterans Post to Live in the American Legion, uh, they're helping the Council of Governments, South Central Council. Council of Governments distributing food at the Los Angeles County Fairgrounds on Wednesday, uh, August seventeenth, uh, starting at nine A M., and they're going to continue to do that on the Wednesdays when they do distribute the food. So, and that's pretty brief, uh, that's another.
I have nothing.
Nancy?
Arts and Council met, and they're working on an update of the Art Tour brochure that will include um some places downtown that were mistakenly left out of all, as well as including the Quibeter River Trading Company. So that's in the works. Um, the Space Creed Oversight Board did a tour of the Commons area, which has much improved since the last time I walked through. It's getting very close to being a useful space. And there is an open house with music on Friday, or the fourth.
The fourth.
Thursday at, from five to eight. So Republicans invited to come and take a look at it, I think they'll be impressed, it's really neat.
I did have a question, I know that uh this issue arose, I guess, in the back area. Some of the uh stone is is sloughing a little bit, and Mr. Valentine and I talked about that.
What back area?
Well, I guess the back in the Commons area, way in the back in the old garage section. And uh, you know, some of it's just paper thin, others maybe quarter inch thin. And uh, they're talking about having to go in and, they can't sandblast it because it's too harsh. But there's another way to do that, I'm not sure if that's something the guys have talked about.
No.
That would be totally different than what's going on now, but just for your.
No, that, that area is actively being worked on right now. They repaired the um skylight and they've opened up the windows in the back. So you can operate the skylight to let heat out and it'll be great, but I don't know anything about that.
You have to use something like a, it's not walnut, you know, shells or something.
Stick their ice blast.
And ice blasting the other wire, recently was corn, corn cob. Lasting, it's interesting, but they, that was something that was talked about.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Nothing to report.
I attended uh last week, um at least virtually, I was, I was really ill, but I attended virtually uh the South Central Council of Governments uh meeting and also the TRP meeting. I I don't have anything to report from the cog meeting at this point. Uh but at the TRP, uh TPR, sorry, we did bring forward the multimodal visitor center um and had a a lengthy discussion with everybody involved with that. And to be honest, Mayor, if it's all right with you, I'd, I'd let you give the update on that as, as you were present at the meeting. Probably have a better perspective.
Yeah, like I said, I was there and uh, like I said, you know, we went in with a little bit more hope, but the way, you know, bureaucratic stuff goes, we were left with more questions than answers. Uh, we have to do some more research, lots more research, well, some research, but uh, one of the things I'm trying to do right now is to set up an additional meeting with uh C dot, uh whether we have to go to Buffalo and meet with them or do it virtually. Uh, I think what I'd like to do is to get everything nailed down, what we actually have to do. And that, like you said, that, that's the, those are some of the questions that really went unanswered so that we can make sure that we follow, we're following all the procedures properly so that we can't lose out on future, uh, the future ability to use and to apply for federal grant. Because that's one thing that was made known to us before the TPR meeting, that in order to be able to apply for funding now, where we do have to follow the procedures that they have in place. I have something else that came up actually today that was interesting. Uh, that roadmap that the Council of Directs is doing, uh, they had the Brownfields meeting. And one of the things that uh I talked to about this particular proposal that we're trying to do, and one of the things that they said is that uh we needed to do a phase one assessment as we begin the process. They would help us do that at no cost, they told us. So, and then, then, but the reason for the phase one assessment is, there again, we've got bureaucratic stuff that we got to follow through, is that if down the road, now we need to apply for a Brownsville grant, then we can apply for the Brownsville grant through the state or the EPA grant. And in order to be able to apply for those grants, if necessary, we have to have this phase one in place. It only lasts for six months, so if the, the purchase of this goes on for more than six months, it's a good, we'll have to, they'll make an update for us. So it, it sounds like it, it was good to know, uh, because even though I've talked to the owner of the Texaco station, they said that all the tanks have been removed, but until, but until uh C dot comes down, does its own environmental stuff, you never know what's going to happen.
Mayor, can, so could they do that phase one? E- even if we don't own the property, could that be?
Oh, yes, well, we have to do a survey, we also have to do the appraisals, and this, this would have to go kind of all in tandem, it looks like.
The owner of the Texaco station would not have to incur the cost at the EPA, came in and said, no, there's some. You've got problems, so. I'm sorry, did I say that out loud?
Uh, we also, as a matter of fact, uh, Councilwoman Ogletree was at the Los Angeles County, there was a joint meeting that we had. So, uh, why don't you go ahead and fill in on that?
It was a good productive meeting we sat down with the three commissioners, and Audra was there, and the mayor was there, and I can't remember who else. Cog, Senator was there, and we talked about different ways that we might collaborate and have more um communication. And one idea that was floated was possibly having, I believe, Phil Doran Camp and our new city manager touch base at least once a month and just kind of make sure everybody knows what's going on. Commissioner Felix Lopez was most interested in trying to work with us regarding the airport. And they've been putting money into the airport and getting that thing better. And I think he's correct that as transit grows, people are going to want to use that airport more. People coming in, doing developments and stuff, it's, it's better to have an airport that's functional. We're supposed to do a tour of it at some point and see where things are, and that's where we left them.
One of the things that I'd recommend is uh to uh Phil Doran Camp after the meeting, this was a couple of days later, I was thinking about it, that when we had that meeting at the college, uh, what, a couple of months ago? And uh, that was when Goco was there, and I think, I forget who all, who all were there at that meeting. And I mentioned to him, probably would be a good idea to send kind of a synopsis to Goco of that particular meeting that we attended last week, so that at least they know that we're making that effort. Because the only thing that it's going to boil down to, it's going to boil down to is, uh, down the road is that when we apply for grants through Goco, they're going to want to know this collaboration that we're trying to, that we're working together. So I, when we have these meetings, be a good idea for us to just send them a, a note saying, this happened on such and such day, these were some of the discussions that we had. So I think it's going to be important that we be able to follow through with that. Other than that?
I have a, I, I don't have any reports, but I'd like to, Audra? Uh, on, on one of our work sessions, council meetings, uh, I think a couple of really important things we need to look, look at is what we're going to do with Southside Park. The skate park is just absolutely adorable. They got every word you can think of on there and, I, I mean, nobody's using it. We really need to sit down and discuss that, and the fields up there need a little more tender care because we spent a lot of money on that. And I, I also, we also talked a couple of times about the alarm system in the community center. Have we made any progress on that in City Hall?
I've talked with our I T director about that. I'll follow up with him tomorrow, we have a department head meeting tomorrow, follow up with him tomorrow. Um Marty's going to, Velazquez will buy some paint, get the skate park covered, hopefully. Hopefully it lasts a little bit, and they have been working on the fields up there.
Oh, good.
Um, we had a co- are you ready for my report? Um, so I sat down with um the athletic director from the college, with um Kim Schultz by phone from the Triggers, and also Lawrence Sandoval from the school district. And um, we had a conversation about use of Central Park fields because now there's, they're getting a lot, a lot of use. And the conditions, obviously, with use comes um deterioration of the fields. My dream is to put turf down at some point, just even in the infield. We've been talked about um at some point looking at turf even at Southside Park. Um, when, when we get to the point where we're working on the grandstands, all of the activity for the baseball programs are going to have to shift up to Southside Park. And so, there's no way we can get turf between now and then, potentially, but, and it's very expensive. But we all kind of talked about the benefit of that hindsight being twenty twenty, I wish we would have done that when we did build the grass up at Southside. I think that would have been probably a better approach to um that field in particular. And then, uh, we also talked about the potential of the city programs for football being held on the high school's football fields. Um, to spread out the use of the fields because, again, it, that program's done on Lower Central Field, but college is going to be doing soccer on Lower Central Field. So we really need to coordinate, it was a great meeting. I think at the end of the day, everyone is really on board to try to work together to make everything um better as best we can. And um, that's, that was really the outcome of that, that turf is very expensive.
You know, the question I had on that, with, you know, especially the Central Park, the field itself, you know, that is where the, where in terror happens because on the infield, uh, are they, the college, the school district, are they willing to put in any kind of money into helping to um to do the project?
Well, um, the president of the college was there, she didn't, she didn't really say yes or no. Nobody from the school district with that authority was there. Although, um, they did say that they felt comfortable that the high school field could be used. We also talked about how Los Ninos Park isn't used enough. It's a beautiful park, but it's not regulation size, and at this point, it would just, just, it would take moving the field um closer to the former garage property. We have buildings in that area that we would need to remove, expand the fence, and then add on to that area. It would make it regulation size at that point. Um, for the time being, we are going to remove the scoreboard that's at Los Ninos Park and remove the poles, take the scoreboard over to Central Park so that when the college plays over there, they have a natural scoreboard so that they have an appropriate facility to do their soccer program. And hopefully, those are some things that you, council can kind of put on their radar also for future projects. It's going to all boil down to our sales tax and money, obviously.
Excuse me, one second, finish my question. Uh, the reason why I say is that if they would be willing to put in, get some skin in the game, and not let us do the entire project or something.
Well, you know, when, when I was on council before, and I mean, this has been a while back, we had looked into doing that with the uh infield, with the artificial turf in there. And G- uh, Goco had some money assist that, that was available. I don't know if they still do that, but that might be something we can look at because they were willing almost to do the whole field. And we didn't follow through with it, but that may be a, a source of revenue for that.
You're right, because when we had that Goco meeting a while back, they have various fund, or funds available, that could very well be.
And the lottery fund too, that might be available too, because it's for recreation.
Lottery funds aren't, we don't realize a lot of money through the lottery funds. We did talk about looking for Goco grants, seeing if we could give Goco a grant for that. Central Park, Marty Velazquez estimated probably about four hundred thousand dollars just to do the infield for that. So the larger one, um, I think Southside Park might be a better Goco grant. Southside Park, it was a great project and the fields looked great, but the weather up there causes an awful lot of problems on that field. The, the dirt sloughs into the warning track, I learned terminology up there too. Into the warning track, and um, the dirt blows so much up there that it's constantly a battle just to keep the dirt where it needs to be. It's in the stands, it's on the concrete, it's covering the ADA walking area. So um, the guys at, at the community center, the, in that department have been going out and working on that area to try to get it where it needs to be, but that wasn't something anticipated with that project. That's why I think replacing it with turf would be a really nice project.
Would they, when they, when they did that, weren't they supposed to build a trench around that to keep the water from back flowing onto the field?
Like an entry?
No, it wasn't supposed to be a, a trench across the backside of the field there. I thought that was included in the estimate when they were doing that.
I know there's concrete barriers back there to keep.
Yeah, they were supposed to fix that so that the water wouldn't come, now the dust, there's nothing to do with that because of the wind. But there should be a way to stop that water flow coming on there because there's a lot of water comes off that field.
Frank, I think that, you know, when we were talking about some renovation, what, a couple of years ago, I thought that that was supposed to be included.
That's what I thought too, I thought that was all supposed to be done.
If we do turf up there, we got to buy a lot of vacuum cleaners.
Yeah. Pretty much, of course.
We talked about the savings though with respect to personnel time, the water. They improved, improved safety in some regard, and Southside Park apparently has, for lack of a better term for this one, like a lip that um creates a hazard for the, for whoever's playing on it right now. So they have to do some maintenance to get rid of that, so there's, it's just always a lot of maintenance.
You know, the, the project on, on the, on the park, we're here at Central Park, uh, in talking to Chris Abbey just recently. Been talking to Chris Abbey just recently. There's, I I think some of their programs, there's no cap on some of these fundings that's going through them. So, I mean, if we decide we want to try to go for a Goko fund, you could ask him. That's applicable there.
It's interesting because I looked at, in the Juana, that has such a great field.
Yeah.
Excellent.
I don't know where, it doesn't talk about, what I read, didn't talk about necessarily a Goko grant. But it talked about the expense involved in what they've done, but it's really served their needs well.
You know, good thing to do, talk to Rick Klein, because he's been there for twenty-two years, so he probably knows.
Timmy Martinez donated a lot of money. He played there, played for the Orioles, he donated a lot of money.
Oh, did he?
Totally.
There's your answer.
Donor.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else, honey?
Just a, I guess a reminder at this point, August twenty-ninth, two P M. We'll have a special meeting. That afternoon to discuss the housing applications, incentive applications that the cities received. And consider those agreements.
What time was that again?
Two P M. That started it early. I hope that works for everyone.
It's a Thursday. Okay.
Uh, no, it's a Monday.
Oh, it's a Monday.
We just have five this month, so we don't get to take one off. Because we do have a couple of items on next week's agenda. The sidewalk curb and gutter program has been very popular thus far. It's made our engineering office very busy. And they were already very busy, but they kind of seem to be enjoying it. Or at least they seem, seems that way anyhow, but very popular. There's been, I think the community is really pleased with. City Council's recent actions in seeing that program through, seeing this housing program through. I think those programs are going to make some real significant differences in the community. And what we see as far as built up is concerned and and even people being able to locate here. And have some affordable housing and have decent sidewalks, improved drainage, hopefully. There are a couple of challenges that we've run into, but next regular city council meeting, Marty Hackett will give. City Council a tourism board update. And then, I think I forget more these days than what I remember. But I'm going to try to get the boards, the various boards in front of me to give reports. That way you know what's going on with all of them because they're all so busy and doing so much and very involved and enthusiastic. Which is really nice to see too. I think they always have been, we just, we haven't taken the time to hear from them. And so that's on me. I will make sure that we get some more reports in front of me.
Good, we appreciate it. Okay, I'll go to Dallas.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. So I just want to let you know that that we have not forgotten. There are three marijuana discussions that we need to bring before you. The mayor nonsense had in the affirmative. The cultivation fee issue, and so that's number one. And then also consumption clubs and delivery, marijuana delivery. And Audra sent me, I don't think you sent to them.
I did send to you for now.
Okay, there was a, an article on how consumption clubs are just like taking off in the state of California. I know some of you may not be real receptive to doing what California does. Just kidding, I'm sorry, it seemed funnier in my head. But I mean, but there's a good article on how, how, how popular the the consumption clubs are becoming in California. But those three issues will be bringing before you and, you know, at various times in a work session. And the last thing I have, and for, I don't know why, but I have a need to say this. How nice it was tonight to have somebody saying nice things about staff and not have somebody bashing us. Am I saying that will ensure that at the next meeting? But anyway, that was very refreshing and that is all I have.
Motion, unless there's something else? Most good, Jared?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Call a roll?
DeBono? Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yep is not an option, it's hidden.